I would like to call to order the June 2nd City Council Regular Meeting and ask all of those who would like to join the City Council and myself in the pledge allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is audience comments. Audience comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions that we make. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment will have the opportunity to do so. I would like to remind the audience that Agenda Bill 6818, Talis Plats 7, 8, and 9 is a quasi-judicial matter. Therefore, we will not and cannot accept any audience comments on that particular topic. When recognized, I would ask that you come to the lectern, hear and speak into the microphone, provide your name, your relationship to the city, a resident property owner, a business owner, and your address. Please limit your comments to five minutes. If you have written comments, please submit those to the clerk. Remember to address your comments to the full council and not to individual members. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. If I determine the speaker is out of order, I will ask for concluding comments and direct the speaker to return to his or her seat. If the speaker does not comply, I will ask him or her to leave the council chamber. I'd like to reiterate that citizen comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process. We take comments seriously, and we thank members of the public for taking the time to address us during our meetings. And with that, I would ask the city clerk if anyone has signed up to speak this evening.
I have three. The first is Karen Abel.
For those that didn't sign up, I'll provide an opportunity once those who have signed up have spoken.
Good evening. I'm Karen Abel. I'm the Executive Director of Art East at 95 Front Street North, Issaquah, 98027. And it is my pleasure, councilpeople and mayor, to be back here to talk to you about our Art East second series of community art programs this summer called Crow and Raven: Magic and Mystery. Before I do that, I want to take a minute to thank everyone who attended either the opening reception of the Women of Persia exhibition or who managed to get up to Blakely Hall during that two-month run. It was a fabulous success. Thank you for making it a success. For those of you who were there that opening night, and I think councilpeople Mulligan and Winterstein and Mayor Butler were there, you know it was quite a group, over 160 visitors. The vast, vast, vast majority had never kind of been to the area or had no idea what wonderful things were happening in our neck of the woods. So it was really wonderful for you to help introduce Issaquah in such an impressive way. We continued to have visitors come from all around the Puget Sound area, very specifically seeking out that exhibition during its two-month run, including one day when I was there, a professor from the University of Washington came in doing a research project on Persian cultural events up and down the West Coast. It's also interesting to note that the exhibition, Issaquah Art East, and the Issaquah Reporter were also highlighted and linked to in a very popular Iranian poet's Facebook. Her name is Hilla, let me get this right, Hilla Sidighal, and she is, she has more than 300,000 followers on her Facebook. And so she linked to the story of the Women of Persia exhibition in our town. And I noticed there, even with that, there were more than 3,000 likes and comments on that story. So it is not an exaggeration to say the Women of Persia exhibition made it around the world. We're currently just starting to explore the idea of taking that exhibition up to sister organizations in British Columbia and down in LA. So next up is Crow and Raven. This is, this program consists of two exhibitions and a series of five public lectures. The exhibition down here at the Front Street Art Center opened last Friday, and we had over 150 people attend, a large contingent from, I don't know why, but always from Auburn, Tacoma, Olympia. And for many of those people, again, this is just not a neck of the woods. They get too much, so it's always fun to host them in downtown Issaquah. This upcoming weekend, on June 8th, the exhibition up at Blakely Hall opens with a reception as well as two free public lectures. The first public lecture that afternoon is on actually The Science Complexity and Beauty of Feathers by Chris Maynard, who's both an artist, researcher, and an author. That's followed immediately by a lecture on a fiction book called Song of the Crow, and that is about a raven's retelling of the Noah of Ark story. So the raven's point of view as he's on the ark, which has got to be really wonderful. We have the Redmond Poet Laureate at that event doing poetry reading, and we will also have a Native American flute player that evening at the reception, so we hope you can join us. But there's more. So we're very excited on June 16th to welcome Dr. John Marsloff from the University of Washington. Dr. Marsloff is a very renowned avian researcher and biologist. His work on the amazing intelligence of crows has been highlighted in two books, as well as the PBS Nature Series called Murder of Crows. And most recently, even this year, I noticed he did a TED Talk on the intelligence of crows. So we are really thrilled to have him here to Issaquah. That's June 16th at Village Theatre First Stage. But wait, there's more.
30 seconds?
Pardon me?
30 seconds?
Oh, okay. Both on June 24th and July 6th, we have two more free public lectures, poetry and poetry readings. Thank you. I hope to see you there.
Next on my list is Pat Costello, followed by Dave Wagner.
My name is Pat Costello, and I'm here tonight representing the Issaquah Drug-Free Community Coalition. Good evening, Mayor Butler and city council members. As I said, my name is Pat Costello, and I am the project coordinator for the Issaquah Drug-Free Community Coalition. I am here tonight with several other members of the coalition who I will ask to stand. Thank you. We wanted to come here tonight to personally thank you for your recent decision to make Safe Drug-Free Issaquah one of your top five goals for 2014-2015. Our mission is to prevent and reduce youth alcohol, marijuana, and prescription drug abuse within the Issaquah school service area. In October of 2013, we received our first federal drug-free communities grant from the National Office of Drug Control Policy to do this important work over the next five years. A key indicator of our success will be building the important partnerships that will in turn increase and create the impact to address these critical health issues that our youth and families are facing today. The city and the coalition have the same vision, to ensure our community continues to be a place where children, youth, and families can continue to live healthy, safe, and drug-free. We wanted to let you personally know that we are your partner, ready to serve, to continue to make this vision a reality for our community. Thank you, Mayor Butler, for your ongoing support, and of course, to the rest of the council for approving the resolution. We look forward to reporting back to you on our progress over the next five years, and of course, working with you to continue to make Issaquah safe and drug-free. Thank you very much.
Dave Wagner.
I think it can hear me. I've never been quiet and shy. My name's Dave Wagner, and I'm 360 Northwest Dogwood Street, apartment K204. Been a resident of Issaquah since 1945, with the exception of 26 years in Uncle Sam's United States Army. I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about some history, a thing called D-Day. Let me get us in the mood here. What you hear in the background is from Richard Rogers' CD Victory at Sea, Volume When I was a little boy, I sat next to my dad on the couch at our home on Beacon Hill in Seattle and watched an episode of Victory at Sea once a week. I think it was Tuesdays, and it was on a 24-inch black-and-white TV. Does that tell you how old I am? My dad always looked forward to that program as he was a World War II veteran. And I know now he could relate to many of the stories. The particular soundtrack you are hearing is called D-Day. Sorry, the volume's going up and down. And this Friday is the 70th anniversary of D-Day, that infamous June 6, 1944. And just to keep this in perspective, I was 64 days old on June 6, 1944. Yep, I'm 70 years old. I sat with my dad watching those episodes and reruns for many years and hearing that music, Victory at Sea. I never fully grasped what it all meant, but I knew it was important to my dad. I did ask questions that all sons ask their dads who fought in a war. And most of those questions were answered vaguely and somewhat matter-of-factly. But like all young boys and young men, it didn't have any meaning, no impact on me as I fully didn't under, I fully, I did not fully understand what it meant. War, death, service, sacrifice, honor, freedom. Just words, so I thought. And all those classes in school, well, those were just history and dates and pictures. It wasn't until I put on our country's uniform and went off to war myself I truly understood. Then it became clearer for me, those words had deeper meaning. They were real. By June 1944, our country had been at war for three and a half years, and everyone here at home sacrificed for that war effort. War bonds, scrap metal drives, Rosie the Riveter ration cards, all part of that effort to bring our troops home and win that war. Now it was finally time to free Europe and the tyranny that they had suffered under Nazi Germany since 1939. Now the time was right for the beginning of the end of that tyranny. The code name? Operation Overlord. 156,000 Allied troops from the United States, the United Kingdom, Canada, Free France, and Norway. The Allied codenames for the beaches along the 50-mile stretch of Normandy coast targeted for landing were Utah, Omaha, Gold, Juneau, Sword, names that ingrained themselves into the memories and lives of servicemen and women for a lifetime, for an eternity.
45 seconds.
Ever since June 6, 1944, people have been asking what D-Day meant. Well, it means "the day," simply "the day." Until the very last minute, the place of the invasion, Normandy, was a most heavily-guarded secret on the planet. Every unit conducting the initial assaults did not know the locations of the landings. Surprise was crucial. It is estimated that nearly 2 million soldiers and airmen were involved in Operation Overlord, including US, British, Canadians, and those of the Normandy Bridgehead. There were 1,557 deaths on Omaha Beach that day. There were 6,000 casualties. And today, we ask ourselves, is it too old? Is it too long ago? Have we forgotten? No. So, along with Mayor Butler's help and a letter that we received from the Heritage Museum, the Flying Heritage Museum, Friday, this Friday, we are going to host a veteran's celebration. We're going to put in the middle of Memorial Field World War II veterans, and overhead of those veterans, we're going to fly four P-51 aircraft. And you will not believe the sound. They are loud. And I'm hoping to get them to drop down to 1,000 feet so that they go over the top, because what I'm trying to organize is the fellows on the ground waving as the planes wave back to them. That's what I'm trying to do. 1,557 men died that day, June 6, 1944. I can't forget them. It means more now than it ever has, because guess what? The world is free. Europe is free. Because of what they did, it's free. We can't forget. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. I have no other.
Is there anyone else in the audience desiring to speak? Yes, sir. If you'd come forward, please.
Mr. Mayor and member of the city council, I am Claus Mueller. I've been a resident of Issaquah since 1969. On May 19th, I wrote the mayor and city council regarding my idea to ban the sales of marijuana in Issaquah city limits. I have been a commercial real estate appraiser at MAI for 33 years, and I'm only too familiar with blighted areas of town, which sometimes accompany that sort of activity and the challenges landowners have of trying to refurbish or rebuild their properties in these rundown The Issaquah Downtown Association has worked hard to build up the economy of the downtown area, and I think that sales of pot shops would be detrimental to not only the economy but to also the people that frequent those establishments. Last week, the Daily Journal of Commerce, which is a business paper published in Seattle catering to the construction industry, but also has other items of general interest in it, had an article about liquor sales tied to emergency room trip, tip, trips. As you may know, a couple of years ago, the state got out of the liquor business and opened it up to private industry. And Tacoma News Tribune reported that during the first 13 months of private sector spirit sales, kids on Medicaid made a third more visits to emergency rooms for alcohol-related reasons. In County, in King County, they found that 50% more hospital visits were related to alcohol between June 2012 and September 2013. Liquor sales went up 3% or 4%, emergency room sales went up 50%. I believe the same thing will happen if you have pot sold within the city limits. There's going to be a corresponding increase to emergency room visits. I'm familiar with the Gorge, which is an amphitheater near Vantage on the Columbia River, hosting a lot of rock concerts. They've had big problems with drug overdoses and DUIs, and the small hospital of Quincy, Washington, has an unpaid bill for services for these sick people of half a million dollars. So I would urge you hard to think carefully about legalizing sale of marijuana within the city limits. After all, if you can ban plastic bags, I think you ought to be able to ban marijuana, which is the greater evil. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience desiring to speak? Yes.
Karen Porterfield. I'm both a resident and a taxpayer here, and thank you for providing the opportunity for the citizens here, Mayor Butler and council members. And I just wanted to have a quick few remarks around policy application. I would say that we all feel a great deal of pride tonight, as we have heard about Drug-Free Issaquah, about some engaging art that is here, and about Friday's celebration. As a daughter of a Marine, I wanted to applaud. There are some things we don't take as much pride in, and we shouldn't in this city. Sadly, several years ago, we're all aware of Anderson versus City of Issaquah and the precedents that set. And from that state Supreme Court ruling, the understanding that across all our departments and the statutes we have, the laws that we have, that we need to have an equitable and just application of all our guidelines. When we go to court, it costs us money. It was expensive to take Anderson versus City of Issaquah all the way to the State Supreme Court. And I would just hope in the future, as we balance our priorities, that we think long and hard about having consistent application of all our rules and regulations in all our departments. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience desiring to speak? Anyone else desiring to speak this evening? Third and final call, anyone else desiring to speak? Seeing no one, then audience comments are closed, and we will move now to committee and regional reports, beginning with Councilmember Mulligan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a report tonight.
Councilmember Paulie.
Just a short one. The King Conservation District Advisory Committee approved a recommendation last week to forward the draft work program onto the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Commission for review and comment. I had shown you, sent the council members an earlier draft of that. It hasn't changed all that much. Just a quick summary is that it's about expanding some of the existing programs that they offer, as well as adding some new ones. By sending it to the SCA PIC, they are hoping to get feedback through TOLA, who's our representative there, of what you think about these new plans and programs and the regional benefits that could be received. And so that should be coming before us in a couple of weeks via Councilmember Marts. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Marts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will not be having a land and shore meeting this month, as amazingly enough, we've had a lot of issues so far this spring, so we get, we get one quiet month. And then the Sound Cities Association will be meeting Wednesday, June 11th at 7:00 PM, and the agenda has not yet been set.
Thank you. Councilmember Scher.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to members of the viewing public. The council infrastructure committee will meet on June 19th, which is a Thursday, at 5:30 PM, in the Pickering Room of City Hall Northwest. The formal agenda has not yet been set, but I can tell you that the committee intends to take up the prioritization of capital projects relating to utilities and transportation for referral back to the council and use in our fall, excuse me, fall budget deliberations. And we were to have an item on food packaging relating to our ordinance, which bans the use of styrofoam and non-recyclable, non-compostable materials. That issue's going to be deferred to July for the preparation of a bill to be referred to committee. And we do potentially have an item dealing with transit alternatives in the wake of the Proposition 1 failure and options regarding the future of the RAT 200. It's still a little up in the air if we're going to be able to take that up at the committee meeting on the 19th, but watch the agenda online, and you'll be able to see it on there when it's posted in terms of the topics. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, Mayor. Services and Safety will be meeting on June 5th at 5:00 PM in the Eagle Room. There are five items before us that evening. The first is 67999, a public art purchase, which is being brought forward from the Art Commission. 6824 is a Sprint telecommunications facility lease agreement. 6774 is a use and consumption of marijuana in the public and driving under the influence of. 6827 is an Arch Trust Fund recommendation, and the last is 6828, King County CDBG inter-local agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
I have no report.
And Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. Next Monday, a week from tonight, at 6:30 here in this room, the council committee of the whole will be having a work session. The formal agenda hasn't been set, but I expect to be discussing traffic concurrency. I'm sure it's everybody's favorite topic. And we're also going to take some time and discuss kind of review of the recently completed goal-setting process. That concludes my report.
Thank you for the mayor's report. Last Wednesday, I had the pleasure of having lunch with Recology/Cleanescape drivers. They are those that pick up our solid waste, yard waste, and recyclable material. Coming out of that meeting, there was a high degree of professionalism and a desire to provide the best customer service to our citizens. I was impressed with the enthusiasm of the drivers, and Issaquah is one of the favorite places that they like to pick up your trash and recyclables. There will not be an executive session this evening. A reminder that our passport services are on the move, and starting tomorrow, they will be relocate passport services to City Hall Northwest and offer appointment-only service. Applications will be accepted by appointment only from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. To schedule an appointment, please call 425-837-3003. Or for more information, you can visit the city's website at issaquawa@issaquawa.gov/passports. We are still recruiting applicants for the Issaquah Library Board until August the 15th. If you're interested in a unique opportunity to serve as a library advocate in our community, consider applying at issaquawa.gov/library. Or if you would like more information about the Library Board, join me in attending an informational session on Wednesday, June 25th, from 6:30 to 7:30 at the Issaquah Library. The Issaquah Community Network is seeking youth representatives. If you are 18 and you would like to make a difference on youth suicide prevention, reducing youth substance abuse, reducing youth homelessness, and other important issues facing the youth in Issaquah, you should consider applying. The deadline to apply is June 20th. To learn more, please visit issaquacommunitynetwork.com. Now that summer is here, you and your family are invited to Family Fridays at the Julius Boon Pool. The monthly event promises a soaking good time. I wonder who writes these. This is, that's interesting. A soaking good time for swimmers of all ages. The festivities start June 6 and continue from 6:30 to 9:30 PM on the first Friday of the month until the finale on August 1st. For more information, you can visit the city's website, issaquawa.gov/pool. Our inaugural Issaquah Job Fair was a tremendous success. On May 28th, we partnered with the Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce, Issaquah High School District, and the Workforce Development Council of Seattle, King County, to connect job seekers to great employers in our community. 35 different companies. Thirty-five different companies provided information and applications seeking part-time and full-time jobs for our youth. And I'd like to thank everyone for participating in our inaugural event. And with that, that concludes the mayor's report this evening. Moving to our consent calendar, I would ask if the accounts payable and payroll have been reviewed.
Yes.
They have.
And with that, I would ask for your pleasure on the consent calendar. Councilmember Winterstein.
I move that we adopt the consent calendar as submitted.
Second.
Then moved and seconded, any discussions or questions? Seeing none, then, all in favor of approving the consent calendar as submitted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries unanimously. Moving now to regular business, our first item of regular business is Agenda Bill 6705, I-502 recreational marijuana regulations. And I believe this is coming back from the Land and Shore Committee, and I see Jason Rogers for the staff report. Jason, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Jason Rogers with the Development Services Department for the city, and I'll give you a brief overview of this agenda bill and the discussions to date on it. This is Agenda Bill 6705. It's been discussed by the Land and Shore Committee since, I believe, August of 2013, technically. There was a bit of a gap in the meetings, and then they picked up the review early this year. So the quick background on recreational marijuana law, Initiative 502 was approved by the voters back -- oh, it was closer. Initiative 502 was approved by the voters back in November 2012, so about a year and a half ago. After analyzing it and watching what the State Liquor Control Board was proposing to do, the administration proposed some zoning regulations to implement recreational marijuana markets in August of 2013. That was since the Land and Shore Committee at that time. And at that time, because the state rules were not finalized, the Land and Shore Committee recommended and the council adopted a six-month moratorium that went from early September until early March of 2014. Liquor Control Board finalized their rulemaking in November of 2013, but there were still, at that point, quite a few questions as to how exactly this market would work out. And so the council opted to extend the moratorium in late February until July 7. So the current status, we were very interested in what the state legislature might do in their short 2014 session. Ultimately, they did just about nothing related to marijuana. They passed one bill which legalized marijuana concentrates like hash oil, and that was it. So right now, some state licenses are being issued for producers and processors. They have not issued any retail licenses so far and do not anticipate issuing any until July at the earliest. In Issaquah specifically, there were initially 19 applications for retailer. Only 10 of those got past the initial screen and were entered into the lottery. Issaquah has only allocated one retail store, and so of those 19, they willed it to 10, and now those 10 have been ranked in order 1 through 10. So we have a much better idea of who is likely to get a license in Issaquah. There were also two applications for a producer/processor, and neither of those have been issued yet. Only one has come through the city for review. As I mentioned before, the moratorium expires on July 7, and so we are asking for some kind of action from the city council in the near future. So the proposed regulations, as recommended by the Land and Shore Committee, would allow marijuana retailers, so the people who are actually selling marijuana products to citizens, in all of Issaquah's commercial areas except the CBD zone, so everywhere but the downtown zone. Part of the reason for this is, of course, the CBD zone is maybe not the most compatible area for marijuana retailers, but also because, and I'll mention this in a second, but there are thousand-foot buffers that the state law requires around parks and schools and daycares, and all of Old Town is actually within those buffers. So it's somewhat of a moot point. For the producers and processors, the proposal is to allow them in the intensive commercial zone only. So that's the area backed by the city shops north of I-90. It's a fairly small area at this time, but that's our, like I said, our intensive commercial, light industrial zones, so those uses seem to fit best in there. One thing that the Land and Shore Committee recommended was that all these uses, whether it's a retailer or a producer/processor, be separated by at least 1,000 feet. So this is similar to how our medical marijuana ordinance works, where we require the collective gardens be at least 1,000 feet apart. We're looking at the same thing now for here. Retailers have to be at least 1,000 feet apart from a producer/processor, et cetera, et cetera. The other requirements in the ordinance include requirements for security cameras and systems, alarm systems. It allows for inspections, and it also specifies that home occupations are not allowed. This is, in some respects, mirroring state law, because the Liquor Control Board has said they will not issue a license for any of these facilities in a private home, because they need to be able to access it to inspect. The ordinance would also set application requirements. So one of the big ones is it would require a Level 2 administrative site development permit, which is a land use permit. That requires neighbor notification to all property owners within 300 feet. So if somebody were to apply for one of these, we would send notice to everybody, so everybody around would hear about it. What some other cities have been doing, and I just listed a few here. So Bellevue has currently adopted interim regulations. They allow it generally in their industrial zones outside of those thousand-foot buffers. Redmond currently is working on recommended regulations. They have not been approved as of the last check, but they're looking at allowing a similar set of regulations to Issaquah. Kirkland initially decided that they weren't going to do any additional regulations at all. They were just going to work with their city code as it existed. After further consideration, they are now developing regulations aimed at more specifically regulating recreational marijuana facilities. Renton, City of Renton, adopted regulations some time ago. Again, it mostly allows these facilities in industrial areas. City Smith has a moratorium on, although that's not really -- it doesn't matter too much, because they don't have any valid applications for any facilities, so that's not going to have much effect. And then Colorado, which is the other state that approved recreational marijuana, their law's a little bit different from Washington's. So first of all, their law specifically allows cities and counties to ban the sale of marijuana within their borders. So a lot of cities and counties in Colorado have done this. Denver, of course, allows it. Colorado Springs, for example, does not. And so what you've ended up with is this kind of balkanization going on throughout the state. They've had, you know, they predicted a certain amount of tax returns. They've seen the tax returns vary a little bit over the three or four months that they've had stores open. And so far, there haven't been any indications of increased crime. But like I said, they've only had stores open for a few months, and so it's going to take some time to really work through this. Another way that Colorado's law differs substantially from Washington's is Colorado allows home grows, which has led to some public safety, potential public safety issues. There's been quite a bit in news about hash oil explosions and fires lately. Colorado has a pretty big problem with that, because people can legally grow marijuana and, of course, do things with it in their house. That's not legal in Washington at all. So the administration recommends adoption of the proposed regulations in concert with the Land and Shore Committee's recommendation. We also recommend that you take some action prior to the expiration of the moratorium on July 7. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. And as I mentioned earlier, this is coming back to the council from the Land and Shore Committee. Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that presentation, Jason. I move to adopt ordinance number...
It's ordinance number 2715.
Regulating recreational marijuana facilities, adding new definitions to Chapters 18.02, adding a new Section 18.07.512, providing for the regulation of recreational marijuana facilities, requiring separation and security, amending the table of uses in Section 18.06.130 to restrict the location of recreational marijuana facilities, revisiting a footnote to the table in Section 18.04.100-3 to contain a reference to recreational marijuana facilities, adding a new subsection K to Section 18.04.400 to require a Level 2 review of recreational marijuana facilities, amending Section 18.07.470 to prohibit recreational marijuana facilities as home occupations, amending Chapter 18.19A, Central Issaquah Development and Design Standards, to restrict the location of recreational marijuana facilities in the Central Issaquah area, and repealing the moratorium established by ordinances 2686 and 2708.
It has been moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to circle back on this topic, because we had a very productive work session several weeks ago, when I stated my position in being in favor of the ban on marijuana, recreational marijuana businesses in Issaquah. Since then, I've spent a lot of time researching and talking with folks about the topic, and I'm fortunate to have friends who have given me their time and their serious consideration, and also to have friends who are quite expert on the subject. And I also spent an afternoon reading the Washington State Liquor Control Board rules to answer the questions that I had asked Jason back at that workshop. And so now I understand more about the state, what the state intends to do to manage product strength, source tracking, taxes, and other important regulatory details. But in talking about recreational marijuana, I often heard, "Oh, come on, it's just like legalizing alcohol." Well, in at least one very important way, it is not. When alcohol became legal in the United States, the federal government first repealed the prohibition amendment in the Constitution and then allowed the states to adopt laws, making alcohol legal. The fact that recreational marijuana is illegal in the federal level, it really just rubs me the wrong way. Laws made by Congress are to be enforced. Our rule of law is often cited as one of the most treasured qualities in the United States. It's very hard for me to go against this basic tenet in our nation. But is it just like alcohol? I wondered this last weekend, and maybe another way. It might be, in this sense. Last weekend was prom at Issaquah High School. I have a high schooler. Several parents arranged after parties for our youth, and they served alcohol. Not only is this illegal, but it puts our kids in dangerous situations. Why does this happen? Is it because there's an air of permissiveness about alcohol in our culture, in that it's legal and ubiquitous for grownups? I can well imagine how allowing the production and sale of recreational marijuana would increase the consumption amongst our youth in just this way. I don't think I need to go into why we don't want our kids consuming marijuana. But then again, maybe it's like cigarette regulations. Many have hoped, including myself, that in legalizing recreational marijuana and setting up a marketplace, we could replace the dangerous black market. But like cigarettes, we've placed huge taxes in the state of Washington on recreational marijuana by statute. And such heavy taxation, I think, will likely perpetuate the very black market that we hope to replace. And just some details on this, a pack of cigarettes in the state of Washington has $3.03 taxes on it. In Oregon, it's $1.13, and in Idaho, it's only 57 cents, our bordering states. And I researched and found statistics that said that 48% of all cigarettes consumed in Washington State come from out-of-state. So I think it's likely that, under our current state regulations, that marijuana's black market will continue undercutting the legal products. But both those comparisons are not directly applicable, I know that, but considering their history can be helpful in this matter. At the same time, the differences point to how we're heading into an uncharted territory with inherent risks. A friend of mine quipped, though, which I thought was quite good, "Why be an early adopter when it's a pain in the butt?" But besides that, don't get me wrong, just a few days ago, I planned to vote yes. I had had an in-depth conversation with a well-regarded expert on drug addiction and alcohol prohibition and the repeal, and he provided a really compelling argument. And for about six hours, that's what I planned to do. But I continued to talk to people, and I found another person to talk with who changed my mind in yet another way. So where I'm going with this is that we're here, we're voting today, not yesterday, not tomorrow. There's really only one way for me to go forward. If we institute a ban today, we can lift it later. But if we lift it today, we can't go back. And I believe that the uncharted territory that's being explored by the cities around us and by Colorado can be very helpful. Maybe we could learn from their experiences before going forward. I think we can all agree that the months ahead will be very informative. And finally, for me, I know that if I voted to ban recreational marijuana today, I would never regret it. Worst-case scenarios aren't that bad. Folks can go over to Bellevue to buy recreational marijuana. I could live with that. But if I voted for this agenda bill today, I can see worst-case scenarios very likely here at home that I would deeply regret. And for that reason alone is enough to cause me to vote against the agenda bill today. And I thank you for letting me come back to you after spending more time with this topic and reporting to you.
Thank you. Other questions or discussion? Councilmember Scher.
Thank you. I have a question and then some comments. Maybe Jason can answer a question. I unfortunately missed the work session, so this may have already been discussed, but can you explain for a moment about the taxation structure concerning recreational marijuana outlets? Because I know that it's been a concern in some other jurisdictions that have not gone through with this, that they may not be getting a fair share of taxation, which is what impacted some of their decision-making.
Yeah, absolutely. So I-502, as written, directly provides no money at all to local governments. There was an effort in the state legislature during this session to change that, to allocate varying percentages of that 25% excise tax at all levels to cities. Like I said, all those efforts failed. And so what we're left with is there is no money directly. These businesses, should they be allowed, would be subject to the BNO tax. The sales are subject to sales tax. So there is a little bit of money coming in that way, like any other business. But that's where we're left right now. Certainly, there could be additional efforts in the legislature next year, but they have a lot on their plate, so who knows?
Okay. Thank you. I have a few thoughts on this as well, and I wasn't on the committee that addressed this topic, so I didn't get to participate in all those great in-depth discussions that your committee did. But this is quite an interesting topic and a timely one. And my take on it is that the voters of this state approved Initiative 502 in 2012. And, you know, I don't remember how many votes it passed by, but it was definitely approved. And we were afforded, at that point in time, a historic opportunity to engage in a state-licensed and regulatory system for the possession and distribution of marijuana. What I believe this bill proposes tonight is perfectly legal, and it's also appropriate. At age 18, which granted, as I get older, seems a lot younger than it used to, but at age 18, a high school student can legally purchase cigarettes, which are known to cause lung cancer, and e-cigarettes, which directly inject nicotine into the body. Just three years later, you can legally start buying alcohol, and yet marijuana, which has been recognized as having medicinal purposes by the scientific community, has remained illegal, even taboo, and, in my opinion, ridiculously listed as a Schedule I narcotic by the federal government, right up there with methamphetamine and heroin. I believe that a ban should be reserved for the worst of the worst, which is frankly why I didn't support banning plastic bags in our community. Because when we look at regulatory schemes, I don't believe that a complete ban on something is appropriate where there is a redeeming value. You know, the 10th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution provides that powers that are not granted to the federal government under the Constitution nor prohibited to the states are reserved to the states or the people. I believe that's us in this context. Make no mistake, bad choices with marijuana can lead to abuse or even the crime of driving under the influence. Alcohol and other drugs can too, and in my former practice, I've represented hundreds of individuals in my career who have fought that battle. But we're not here tonight to prescribe treatment or solve the controlled substances problems which plague our community. We're here to implement policy that is consistent with the law of Washington, has been vetted by our Planning Policy Commission, and our committee's hard work over many meetings. The proposed zoning and safety considerations, which I would notice to the latter appear more stringent than jewelry or liquor stores, which can be robbed as well, fairly and adequately balance a legitimate purpose with sensitive areas within the city, such as schools, parks, and daycares. I would support this bill and suggest we move forward with this landmark decision for our city and join others who have charted a similar path ahead. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Councilmember Martz.
I'll speak to this bill, a couple of things. First off, on the state versus federal, I think that we are very lucky that there are areas where states get to chart their own course. And I think that our state leads in a lot of ways, and the Western U.S. leads in a lot of ways, for individual liberty. We lead in human rights, on same-sex marriage. We lead in the defense of the Second Amendment through our concealed carry and our open carry laws. And I think we've moved, as a state, forward for individual responsibility for what drugs people want to take. I would not be able to support this bill if I had general public safety concerns for the city, but I don't for a couple of reasons. One is that I think that the science shows that marijuana is actually less dangerous than alcohol. I think if you look at the lethality, if you look at what's called the active dose over the lethal dose, you know, 10 times the active dose of alcohol will kill you. And marijuana doesn't have a similar situation, and even the folks who are least supportive of legalizing it don't think that the number of annual fatalities comes anything close to the 25,000 annual fatalities that occur from alcohol, which included both of my grandfathers. And, you know, there are concerns about how recreational marijuana will be applied in the state. Certainly, we have to close loopholes that allow, you know, candy-like substances. I'm confident the state will do so. There are analogies with schnapps and, you know, alcohol being aimed at sporting events. So when I look at it from a philosophical standpoint, I mean, we're a council that just passed, you know, a major goal for a drug-free Issaquah. So if we wind up passing this bill tonight, some people will say, "Well, how can you, you know, support a bill licensing marijuana in the city?" But really, if you compare it to the physical dangers associated with alcohol and some of the central nervous system depressants, I think it's in a different class. In terms of specific to our city, the terms of this bill related to public safety, I think that the fact that adjacent municipalities are plotting a similar course was a factor that went into our committee's decision. I guess I shouldn't speak for the other two committee members, but for me personally, if I thought that there was going to be one recreational marijuana store on the east side, I would think that the public safety concerns and the impact to our city and to our Issaquah Police Department would be much higher. But the fact that the adjoining municipalities are looking at a similar course lessens that. We heard from the IPD in this. We heard that their biggest concerns were addressed by the terms that we put on this bill. And in addition was the public consumption bill that will be coming before Services Committee, because that will give the IPD, you know, if you're sitting out having a barbecue on your back deck and all of a sudden, you know, a thick cloud of marijuana comes wafting into your property, the city will have the tools to deal with that. So that was an important part, I believe, of the decision to move this bill forward. And you put all that together, and that's why I'll be supporting this bill, even though I was such a strong supporter of our city's goal for drug-free for 2015. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or discussion? Councilmember Barber.
Thank you. I have a few comments this evening, and my comments came from the American Medical Association, so I'm going to probably read most of them. It's talking in regards to marijuana and the brain. And it says marijuana was used, directly affects the brain, specifically the parts of the brain responsible for memory, learning, attention, reaction time. And science has confirmed that the adolescent brain, particularly the part of the brain that regulates planning of complex cognitive learning, personality expression, decision-making and social behavior, memory, learning, attention, and reaction time is not fully developed until the mid-20s. Developing brains are especially susceptible to all the negative effects of marijuana and other drug uses. Talks about one of the most well-designed studies on marijuana and the intelligence released in 2012, found that marijuana use reduces the IQ by as much as eight points by age 38 among people who start using marijuana before the age of 18. Even people who have stopped using the drug before their 30th birthday experience the loss of those IQ points not to be regained. Other studies have found that marijuana use is linked to social, a school dropout, and subsequent unemployment, social issues, and sometimes lesser quality of life. According to the U.S. National Survey of Drug Use and Health, youth with poor academic results are much more, are more than four times as likely to have used marijuana in the past years of their youth and the higher grades of high school. This is consistent with an exhaustive meta-analysis examining four different studies by medical, McLeod, and colleagues, published in Lancet. Their research found that marijuana use is consistently associated with lower grades and decreased chance of graduation from high school. And there's many, many more studies that are presented within this. It does also have one little comment where Mr. Miller, I see he has left, spoke in regards to the increase in medical use. And there's a study in here that speaks directly to that point, where they're talking about the numbers, and the numbers they're seeing increasing. And I don't know the specific hospital, but 1991, they had 16,000 cases of marijuana-related issues. In 1908, they had 374 cases of medical issues, marijuana issues, in their ER. So it's really hard, as Tola said. We just passed this Safe and Drug-Free Issaquah, and it's really hard, all of a sudden, that we're jumping out here. And I know it's not a jump-out. This has been going on for quite some time. But it is hard for me, since, you know, I've got grandkids and kids, and we'll strongly discourage the use of this. And as, there's multiple pages of this, I could keep reading for quite some time in regards to the effects on marijuana and the adolescent brain. So just wanted to share that piece of information with everyone this evening.
Thank you. Other questions or discussion? Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. So one of the things I wanted to clarify with Jason is, as it's proposed, it's a thousand feet separation between any marijuana facility, whether it's a collective garden, right?
So the ordinance is not written that way, because you have, so you have the medical marijuana ordinance on one hand, you have this proposed recreational on the other hand, and they don't, strictly speaking, talk to each other. We can certainly make the change if, you know, but as written, it's not proposed that way. So recreational would have to be separated from recreational. Medical would have to be separated from medical.
Because I thought that's what I read. No?
The ordinance does not say that.
Okay. Then I misread it. And in any event, I'm comfortable with this. I'm on land and shore, so I knew what was coming forward. I'm comfortable with it for several reasons. I think one of the main reasons Tola touched on was the public safety issues. We heard from our police department that they just really haven't had any issues with the collective gardens. And also, before, when we were coming, when we were considering the collective gardens, we also had lots of concerns, or lots of concerns were told to us that there were, I'm not saying that very well, we were told that there were concerns with real estate folks and the effect on real estate and the economy here, our local economy. And I am not seeing any evidence that that has come to be true. We have a, from what I can tell, we have a gangbuster market right now, and I'm just not seeing any of those concerns. But I think for a lot of the reasons that have already been touched on, I'm supportive of this. I think that I don't mind being one of the first. We're not the first, and I think we've done this very thoughtfully, so I'm comfortable with it.
Thank you. Anyone else with questions or discussions? Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you, Mayor Butler. The tough decision for me was when we were considering ballot issue I-502. That was the hard time for me. And now, you know, it is the law of the state of Washington, the legality, recreational marijuana, the growing, the producing, and the retail sales of that is legal. So all the wonderful facts that have been shared with us this evening, this doesn't change any of those. It's legal in the state of Washington. It's, I, there has been abuse, there will continue to be abuse. And Tola, and I think the argument, honestly, the argument about alcohol is one that I've seen a lot of destruction due to that drug as well. But I think prohibition did teach us, when you bring something out into the light, you can control it, you can understand it, you can teach. And I think that's the opportunity that we have here. Those were my thought processes when I was deciding on whether to vote for or against I echo what Councilmember Goodman said about the thoughtfulness and the thoroughness of our process. We're looking at one potential retail center here in Issaquah, and at least for the time being. And so, and also, because we were progressive in the medical marijuana, I think we, as a municipality, have experience, both our public safety and we, as homeowners, business owners, residents, guests, have experience with that commerce here in our town as well. So we drew upon all of that. So I'm comfortable with these, the bill as drafted. The additional, we don't, we're more restrictive than what's available than the state laws of a thousand-foot separation. Jason mentioned a number of these. The separation, the security cameras required and inspections allowed, those have proven to be effective tools for us with medical marijuana, and so we're applying them here. So I appreciate that. And so it's, we could ban the sale of marijuana in Issaquah. It wouldn't change the legality of marijuana in Issaquah. I doubt it, I really doubt it would change the prevalence at all of marijuana in Issaquah. And so, you know, the state, the residents of the state voted in favor of I-502. We've done our part, I think, very thoughtfully, and I'm going to support this proposed legislation this evening.
Thank you. Anyone else desiring to speak or have questions? Are you ready to act on the motion? All those in favor of adopting Ordinance Number 2715, regulating recreational marijuana facilities and amending our various codes and IMCs, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
The motion carries five in support, two opposed, Councilmember Milligan and Barber in opposition. Moving now to our next item of business, that is Agenda Bill 6818, Parcels 7, 8, and 9 Preliminary Platte Quasi-Judicial Matter. This is an application for approval of the Preliminary Platte of Talis Parcels 7, 8, and 9. This matter comes before the council after a hearing and recommendation by the Urban Village Development Commission. At this point, I'm going to ask our attorney, Wayne Tanaka, for leading us through the Appearance of Fairness disclosures.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the mayor indicated, this preliminary platte is a quasi-judicial matter, and thus the appearance of fairness doctrine applies. This state law requires disclosure of any items, disclosure by the council of any items that may raise an appearance of fairness violation, such as communications with the applicant or members of the public regarding the platte outside of the meeting process, a business or personal relations with the applicant or any member of the public who has actively participated in the hearings, and owning property in proximity to the platte. I will first ask if any council members have any disclosures relating to appearance of fairness. And we'll just start down here with Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you. I have none. I have none.
I'll point out that I received a number of emails from the community, and to the best of my knowledge, those emails, when they occurred during the, when the hearing was open, were forwarded to this, were collected by the city and included in the public record.
Okay. I'll skip Councilmember Scher for reasons. Councilmember Barber?
I have not.
Okay.
I might have received an email from... Might have received an email from somebody today, but I deleted it.
Okay.
Other than that, none.
None. Councilmember Winterstein? None? Okay. At this point, I would ask if any council member wishes to recuse themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Tanaka. The few remarks. The appearance of fairness doctrine applies to quasi-judicial proceedings in order to bolster public confidence and promote due process in rezones of specific property. Because I'm not a member of the committee that ultimately recommended the proposed actions, my questions have been limited to discussions with city staff, which is neutral, based on a careful review of all materials contained within the record. After much thought, I've concluded as follows. Parcel 7, 8, and 9 are approximately one-quarter to one-half mile from my home in Talis, and I am an HOA member. So when we talk about things related to the HOA, or sub-HOA, or formation of HOA, or financial issues with the HOA, that's me. And I realize that there's no way I can be dispassionate about this issue. In the words of a certain movie quote that I love, "I am emotionally compromised." As most everyone here knows, I am not one to shy away from difficult decisions or express my sentiments on a topic. But tonight's vote is different in nature, and because of my unique relationship to the subject matter, this is a very different situation than just about anything I've encountered on the council. I am your representative, but I am also a resident who will listen to my fellow neighbors. Consequently, to eliminate suspicion, mistrust, and prejudice from this process, I am ethically bound to act with the utmost integrity and recuse myself from considering the issue before us. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Councilmember Scher would have to step down and leave the room until this matter is concluded.
Room or the building? Where do you want me?
Well, just somewhere where we can't hear what's going on.
Where I can't hear, great.
Cover your ears.
I'll be in the parking lot for the next bill.
We'll send someone to get you after the matter.
That would be great.
All right. Thank you. Now, on the basis of these disclosures or any other reason, does anybody, does the applicant or any member of the public wish to challenge any member of the council? If so, please step forward. All right? The record should reflect that no one stepped forward. That concludes the appearance of fairness matter. I will now turn this back to the mayor.
Thank you. We will use the following process this evening. The council must consider this application based on the records submitted to the UVDC. The criteria the council should use in its decision are set forth in the staff reports and UVDC recommendation. The Chair of the Land and Shore Committee will begin with a brief explanation of this item, followed by a staff presentation. I will then accept a motion and discussion. After all discussion, then we will vote on the agenda bill. So with that, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Martz, Chair of Land and Shore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Talis Management Services has submitted a preliminary platte for Parcels 7, 8, and 9 of the Talis development to create 153 residential lots and 16 tracts for recreational, open space, or critical area purposes. The administration forwarded the Talis Parcels 7 through 9 Preliminary Platte application and the staff report, see Exhibit B, to the Urban Village and Development Commission, UVDC, on March 25, 2014, and a briefing was held on April 1, 2014. A public hearing was held on April 15, 2014, at which time the UVDC recommended approval of Parcels 8 and 9 with conditions. Discussion of Parcel 7 was tabled until the next UVDC meeting scheduled for May 6, 2014. On May 6, 2014, the Urban Village Development Commission continued the public hearing from April 15, 2014, concerning only Parcel 7. The UVDC considered the briefing response prepared by staff, public testimony, and presentations by both staff and the applicant. The UVDC voted to move the preliminary platte application forward to the city council without a specific recommendation to approve or deny the application. On May 13, 2014, the Council Land and Shore Committee deliberated the preliminary platte application in a quasi-judicial hearing. The committee discussed several topics related to the perm- The committee discussed several topics related to the permit application, including permitting process and timelines, UVDC's decision to move forward the application without a specific recommendation to approve or deny, design and layout of the preliminary plat, sidewalk modifications, ownership and maintenance of site walls, notably the long and tall wall in Parcel 7, water reservoirs within the western buffer, residential density of the project, why was Parcel 8 and 9 permitted to reduce their respective densities, landscape and trees adjacent to walls, and dead-end roads, notably the road at the north end of the project in Parcel 7. The committee recommended by a vote of three to zero to approve the preliminary plat application. Additionally, the committee requested staff further examine four conditions of approval from the UVDC findings, facts, and conditions dated May 13, 2014. Staff issued its response via a memorandum to the council dated May 20, 2014, with a recommendation to modify three of the conditions, see Exhibit R. And I'm now going to ask city staff to bring us, bring the rest of us up to speed on this issue.
So just as a brief orientation, this is the general southern area of Talis, how the, if there's any interesting meaning, and that transition.
Lucy, if you would turn the microphone on and speak into it.
Sorry, I didn't know it ever got turned off. Should I start over again?
Yes, please.
Okay. So generally speaking, this is the development area of Talis, which is an urban village in Issaquah. Talis Drive is the primary way into the community, where it tees at Shangri-La Way are the three parcels that you are considering the preliminary plat for this evening. They are a combination of single-family detached and attached houses on just under 35 acres. There are also tracts for recreation included in the plat. In general, the proposal complies with many of the development standards, including land use, density, critical areas, trails and walks, roads, parks, and utilities. As Councilmember Martz mentioned, Land and Shore had a lengthy discussion of the plat. There were four topics that staff was asked to study and three edits proposed to conditions. The first topic had to do with bonding. Staff responded by indicating that the existing IMC Section 1626120 provisions in the clearing and grading chapter covered the concerns that the council had identified, because it gives us the ability to require a bond in the amount of 150% of estimated construction costs, including retaining walls and rockeries, and that is maintained until the work has been completed or gives the city the ability to complete the work. The second concern that was raised by the Land and Shore Committee had to do with ensuring that trees placed in proximity to the base of walls were sized and located so that they would not impact the walls. Staff proposed the addition of a single sentence to Condition Number 8. You can see that at the bottom of the slide, the sentence, addition, added sentence is "landscape placed near the base of a wall, especially trees, shall be selected and located to accommodate the mature width of the tree." The next topic had to do with recreation, the kind of uses and users that the recreation tracts were designed for. In response to that, staff proposed the addition of two sentences to Condition Number 21. Those are underlined, and state that recreation tracks within Parcels 7, 8, and 9 shall be designed to be useful and serve a variety of users, included varied opportunities for children's play. This will be reviewed with site work permits, as well as the administrative site development permit for the open space tracts. The fourth and final topic had to do with dead-end roads preliminarily, or primarily, at the north end of Parcel 7. The word "explore" had been used in the condition, and the committee was concerned that that was not clear enough, that if the dead-end road could be reduced or eliminated, that it would be. As a result, staff proposed the following edits to the condition, which would read, "Redesign the northern terminus of Road A to eliminate or reduce the dead-end portion if an examination of grades and options indicates that a redesign is practical and feasible, consistent with city codes in the development agreement. Options could include moving Drive C to the north, or adding a cul-de-sac which does not meet fire service standards. This will be reviewed with site work permits for the roads in Parcel 7." The final topic that I want to mention by way of introduction, and then I'm happy to answer questions, is that because of the way this plat moved out of the Urban Village Development Commission, there were two recommendations as two separate documents. For the May 5 council meeting, because that was the night before the second recommendation was issued, the packet contained only the recommendation on Parcels 8 and 9, which was a recommendation to approve. For the May 13 Land and Shore Committee, the packet included the same recommendation on Parcels 8 and 9 to approve, and an unsigned recommendation on Parcel 7, which was to move it forward without a recommendation. We realized today that for the June 2 council meeting, only the recommendation on Parcels 8 and 9 was included in the packet. So I have that with, that was emailed to you earlier today. I have that available to place up on the screen if you're interested. And I think that's all.
Councilmember Martz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the Talis preliminary plat of Parcels 7, 8, and 9, based on the UVDC findings of fact, conclusions, and conditions dated April 24, 2014, and May 13, 2014, as provided in Exhibit A-1 regarding Parcels 8 and 9, and Exhibit A-2 regarding Parcel 7, and with modified conditions provided in the memorandum to city council dated May 20, 2014, as provided in Exhibit R.
A second?
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Councilmember Milligan?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, can I ask questions of the staff at this time?
Yes.
Okay. Lucy, help me understand two details. One is, in the Road A condition that was edited and amended, yeah, it says not to have fire service standards, and I don't quite understand why that choice, and then I have another question after that.
Sure. The Eastside Fire and Rescue reviewed the plat and has worked with us to embed their required fire service turnarounds in the plat as it was moved forward without this change. So they do not need a fire service turnaround to be included to be able to serve the plat. And to achieve a turnaround in that location that met fire service standards would be quite difficult. So since it isn't necessary for them to provide service, but might be beneficial to the overall functionality of the community, the condition was written as proposed.
And then my other question regards the ownership of the walls and the homeowners association. I'm sorry, this has been really complicated. Is there a way that you can summarize how this improved? I really appreciate the work that the UVDC and that the Land and Shore has done, if you could summarize it for me.
Sure. So currently, the property is owned by the applicant. They may choose to sell the property or not. The wall would be built either by the current owner or by a potential future owner, and during that time, the wall would be owned by the property owner. At the time the final plat is proposed, one of several things could happen. During the time that the wall is being designed and/or constructed, the property owner could work with the homeowners association, the Umbrella Homeowners Association, to determine if there's certain, some circumstance under which the Umbrella Homeowners Association would be willing to own that wall with a surcharge or some other set of circumstances. Recognizing that there may not be circumstances under which the Umbrella organization is comfortable, during the, or prior to the final plat being approved, a sub-HOA of the parcels could be established, and the wall could be dedicated to that homeowners association for the ownership and maintenance by the residents or the property owners of Parcel 7, 8, and 9.
So to clarify what you just said, do the homeowners have any choice in that matter?
So the Umbrella Homeowners Association of existing residents has a choice. They could choose to take the wall or not. The sub-HOA, you are not legally allowed to advertise or sell lots until after the final plat is recorded. So the property owner would be establishing the sub-HOA and would have the ability to decide whether the sub-HOA would take the wall, which I assume they would.
What if they don't?
Well, I, I don't know why you would build something that you have no one to give it to.
I think, I think the final scenario would be that the sub-HOA would be established as part of the conditions of the final plat, and so a property owner buying any lot there would know that their sub-HOA would be responsible for that wall, and therefore would have a choice either to agree to that and buy the property, or if they didn't feel that that was something they wanted to do, they would look elsewhere.
If I can continue just a little bit, Lucy. So the homeowners that would possibly be from this sub-HOA then would be responsible for any issues that are arisen or arise from the wall. Maintenance, repairs, that would be all on this subgroup. What happens if there's some catastrophic event that happens? Are they still responsible? And, and what happens if financially they're unable to make necessary repairs?
Well, those are complicated questions that don't have a clear answer, because the facts, you know, the actual facts have not been established. But the general thing would be if, if the HO, sub-HOA were established, and the wall were owned by that sub-HOA, then yes, the sub-HOA would be responsible for their property, maintenance, and any liability as a result of something happening that gave rise to liability for that wall. Again, that's, that's a question that individual property owners comprising the sub-HOA would have to ask themselves when they decided to buy that property. And yes, as in any situation, if there's not sufficient resource to pay for a catastrophic failure, then any loss suffered by the, the victims would be uncompensated, essentially.
The, the walls in, in Talis, there are some other large walls that are owned by sub-HOA, there are some large walls that are owned by the Umbrella HOA, and so it, this is not particularly unusual within the Talis community.
Except for perhaps the size of these, or the potential size of these walls would be greater than some of the, the other ones?
Some of the walls, yes.
Thank you.
Other questions or discussion? Councilmember Martz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, first off, I want to thank staff. This has been a somewhat unique proceeding, even with the quasi-judicial nature, even by quasi-judicial standards, it's been pretty intense. And Land Development Manager Lucy Sloman has done a great job of putting all this together. And there's a, there's an amazing video from a UVDC meeting, and I think Lucy actually has more energy at the end of that meeting than she did at the beginning of that meeting, unlike everyone else who's at that meeting. And that meeting is really important, because that provides sort of the core of how Land and Shore had to look at this issue, because we had to look at why they did not vote a recommendation, one way or the other, on plat 7. And it's somewhat subjective, when you look at a group of people together talking, sometimes it's real obvious, sometimes it's not. Different people could describe it different ways. You know, Cold Stone Creamery has three kinds, sizes of ice cream, right? Like it, love it, and gotta have it. What I saw out of that commission was, they were struggling because it was only a like it. They were not at a love it. And so they had a hard time making, my personal take, they had a hard time bringing that forward. But, but we are not in the business of, you know, sort of adjudicating the aesthetics or the, you know, a subjective take. This, this process is not about a subjective take on the law, it's, it's on whether the law is met. And I think that you see in the four issues that were addressed here from the council meeting, and the three of which resulted in changed, sorry, the, the committee meeting, and the, resulted in three changes in the language, was our committees addressing of the elements of the plats that we felt were still under contention in terms of the law and, and the rules that govern our city. And so by addressing these, I think it's clear, my own personal take is it's clear that I must support this, this bill, because it meets the rules and the laws that we have for the city, and whether I like it or love it is immaterial. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Mary Lou, Polly?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just some comments. It's fun to talk after Tola, because now I'm going to take him on on a few of these points. Actually, I agree with Tola, our role today is to say yes or no, did they meet the regulations that were put upon them? I'm also going to vote in favor, I voted in favor of it in committee, I'll vote in favor today. But I am still really disappointed with some of the outcomes that came. I think that the, the development agreement that was established had some flexibility in, in my mind to get the, a very desirable outcome. And I look at what was proposed, particularly on Parcel 7, and the fact that we have some of the high, high road grades, not higher than anything else, but a few pieces that are very, very high, higher than 12%, and a very long, tall wall, and maybe there's a few sections of other walls that will take it on, but it is still the biggest and the most expensive that's going in there, from what I could see, and that there were circulation issues with dead ends and roads that didn't connect back into anything. And again, I'll still pick on this one, tanks in the buffer. To me, if we're creating a buffer, let's keep it as a buffer. So there were all these four or five items that came together that told me this was not the best. It was good, but it was not the best, and I found that profoundly disappointing. I thought with a little bit of reworking, it was possible to address some of these and come up with a better product. But our vote today is that they meet what was in the requirements, and they did. So I'm voting for it, but I really think with a few adjustments, this could have been a better laid-out project and much more compatible with the neighborhood with which it's attached to. That's my thoughts.
Thank you. Councilmember Milligan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks again. I, I hope I said it enough, the work that was done by the Land and Shore Committee and the Urban Village Development Commission. I, I too watched the videotape of their grueling, long meeting, and, and I would just refine the assessment of, of the kinds of ice cream. I don't think they even liked the ice cream, but they had a choice between pistachio or nothing, and so they said they needed to pick it. And I've been there with them, and it's, it's frustrating, and what this, I will vote for this, because I think that it is, that's the task at hand. Is it compatible? Does it meet the letter? Did we make some improvements? We did make it much better, but as Mary Lou said, it could have been even better. But it establishes in me a stronger resolve to equip our officials, such as our commissions, with some better circumstances for them going forward. And then so, I'm, I'm looking forward to working on that, and appreciate all the work they did to perhaps help us in. And then so, I'm looking forward to working on that and appreciate all the work they did to perhaps help us inform, inform us in those matters. Thank you.
Other questions or discussion? Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'm on Land and Shore, so I'm one of three who recommended that this come forward. And I'm going to support this tonight. I'll tell you a little, a little bit more about why. First of all, the, for me, it's important to remember that this is an agreement that we have. It's a contract. And so, that's part of what, most, of what we need to consider when, when we're reviewing this. The proposal for 153 single family homes, that is within the project's entitlement. And so, there really isn't anything that we can do about that. That's entitled. And so, denying it on that basis would not be proper, in my mind. Similarly, there were issues about traffic that we heard. And the traffic was already mitigated as part of the development agreement process. And the master transportation financing agreement, I understand, has been satisfied. So that is not an issue. Now, what we did hear during this process from folks in Talis are some traffic issues. And sometimes you get traffic issues that become known as developments build out. And the, the way to deal with those is to talk to the city about the concerns that may be able to be addressed at this time. You know, issues that weren't known when the development was just being contemplated. The, as far as the steep slopes and the large wall, there were, seemed to me that there were two broad topics of concern. One was slide potential and the other was wall aesthetics. In terms of slide potential, Appendix E provides for the city to require critical area studies, should the city determine that those are necessary. And in this case, critical area studies were required for those steep slopes. And then, once those studies are done, the designated official for the city is responsible for making a final decision regarding the adequacy of those studies. So those studies were required, the designated official did make findings with at least one condition that I recall reading about in here. However, the studies are not, not part of the record, so we could not review them. And, I don't have any reason to question the findings or conclusions regarding the studies. So that's, so, you know, all I can do is assume that the, that the review process of those studies went the way it's supposed to go. In terms of wall aesthetics, the Appendix B, Chapter Six, in Appendix B, actually expressly provides for large expanses of walls. And it's not surprising given the terrain of Talis. We do have large other, you know, other large walls in the city. There's already one huge wall as you drive into Talis. There's another one when you drive into Squaw Highlands, there's one behind Fred Meyer. This is, I'm not sure it's the tallest wall anymore. It might be just match or be equal to the tallest wall when it's finally built. But it is long and I do understand that they are generally unattractive. Eventually, they blend in. And hopefully, during the remaining review processes that would happen if the preliminary plat is approved, aesthetics will be addressed in terms of the wall. The wall ownership, we talked, we talked about that tonight. The other general concern that we heard from public comment is about the character and whether this proposal is in line with the character of Talis. In Appendix A of the planning goals, the number one goal is mountain village character. And it says, "Talis will be an urban village adapted to reflect the mountainous terrain of the site. The result will be an urban village with a mountain village character." Generally, this means development that conforms to the topography of Cougar Mountain. So, fortunately or unfortunately, however you look at it, this area that is being proposed, seven, eight, and nine, is within the existing footprint of Talis. It happens to be very steep. And when this was all planned to be developed, this was not an area that was set aside to be, to be not developed. It was just the otherwise. It was at least implicitly contemplated that this would be developed. Is it the best place to develop? I don't know. But is it an area that's allowed to be developed if somebody wants to tackle that? Yes. Now, also, this is not, if this is approved tonight, this is not the last hurdle. This is a preliminary plat. There are a number of processes that, that the developer still has to, to, to go through in order to build. And those design, the urban, the design guidelines, guidelines that are in the appendices of the development agreement will continue to be looked at. And I would expect that the city and the developer will continue to talk and negotiate about how to make sure that the character, the mountain village character is, is carried through in this development. Because, because it doesn't end tonight. It, it, it continues on. And the, the development agreement still, still applies as this plat is considered when it's, when it moves forward. So, those are my comments and I'm going to support it. Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Barber.
Thank you. I came this evening with a number of questions and, and thank you, Lucy. Some of those have answered for me. First, starting with the fire standards. And as, as Chair of Eastside Fire and Rescue, it was really hard to look at this going that there was some issues in regards to fire service. And especially when we're talking about dead end roads and the ability to successfully migrate those very large fire trucks and aid units down some of the roads. I also had concerns in regards to some of the high grades on the roads. And the wall, to me, was probably the one that I had some of the most difficulty with. And from the conversations in regards to responsibility, that this is now an HOA responsibility. And, and I'm assuming that means that the city has no obligation to this even in a critical failure. So, I'm seeing heads nod. Circulation issues for me were also an issue. And also that there was certain areas where there was no street parking and actually, street parking had been removed. It is, it is, I went back to the original development agreements and started reading those. And this is a mountain village. It is by choice that somebody lives there. It's probably not a place that I would, would choose, but it is their choice. And with that, I will be supporting that. I think all of the issues have been resolved to my satisfaction. And I think probably the ice cream scenario going down the road is probably this kind of vanilla.
Is there anyone else? Second round then? Councilmember Goodman.
I just had something I forgot to say. I just wanted to say that the, the PPC review and the public involvement, as it usually does, results in a, in a better proposal. And it, it shouldn't be lost on us that there were at least 30 conditions that were added here and that were additionally massaged at Land and Shore. And, I know that I spent a lot of time with this. And so, it's not something that we take lightly. And so, I don't want the people, anybody here to think that, or is watching to think that we take it lightly. But the process is better for all of the public involvement. So we thank you for coming forward.
Is there anyone else desiring to speak or other questions before we vote on the motion? Seeing no one else desiring to speak, all those in favor of moving to approve the Talis preliminary plat of parcels seven, eight, and nine based on the UVDC findings and facts, conclusions, and conditions dated April 24th, 2014 and May 13th, 2014, as provided in Exhibit A1 regarding parcels eight and nine and Exhibit A2 regarding parcel seven and with modified conditions provided in the memorandum to City Council dated May 20th, 2014 as provided in exhibit are signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? With Councilmember Share not voting since he recused himself. So the motion carries six zero. And if someone could let Councilmember, Charlie, thank you. That he can come back into the building. And we will now move to our final regular business item this evening. Agenda Bill 6814, consideration to establish a salary commission. And, I'm going to stall a little bit while we wait for Councilmember Share to return before calling on the Chair of the Services and Safety Committee, Councilmember Barber, to, to introduce the agenda bill. Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, Mayor. I think Tina has got some presentations that she's going to start us off with this evening. So, we'll let Tina start, okay?
Great, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Tina Agar, City Clerk. So, Agenda Bill 6814 is consideration to establish a salary commission. I have just five quick slides. So, current salaries, I can give you a quick show of what you're making. Audience is left, so. But I can tell you that these were established in 2002. It was previously, council salaries were reviewed in 2006. No action was taken at that time. And as I indicated in the previous slide, current salaries were put into effect in 2002 and previous to that in 1998. RCW 3521.015 provides form for cities to create an independent salary commission. And so, that was an agenda bill that was drafted for Council Services and Safety Committee review. That agenda bill was prepared by the Clerk's office. And as part of that, as part of that, presented a salary review of comparable cities. We presented 15 cities and six of those had independent salary commissions. After discussion, the committee was in agreement with a two one to return this agenda bill to tonight to discuss further under regular business. I can tell you that staff is looking for council direction. Is there a desire to form a salary commission if directed? Staff could prepare a draft ordinance, returning that to committee or other designated committee. We would further discuss it, we'd look at the makeup of potential commissions such as the members, the, the term length and effective date, and conduct any other research that was needed. But until then, we're just looking for direction.
Thank you. Councilmember Marz.
Thank you. Is this the only mechanism by which council salary can be adjusted? And if not, what are the other mechanisms?
There is another alternative. This agenda bill was specifically to look at a salary commission. The other alternative would be to, that the council would establish it by ordinance. Council positions salaries would not take effect until that term was new, I should say. So, typically, cities stagger any rate increases. So, four of the seven positions would have a different salary. And then, two years later, the new terms would be in effect.
One clarifying question to that. If, is it by term or is it, somehow I thought that somebody can't, in that by ordinance, that someone can't vote themselves a pay raise even for follow-on terms. In other words, if I were to serve a term beyond this term, I would not be eligible for that raise in perpetuity.
Well, typically, you would do the ordinance adjustment prior to elections occurring. So you would not know who won an election. So, you could set up an ordinance and have terms with a different, you could win the election and receive a higher salary. But you'd want to set up the salary ordinance before elections were known.
Is, is it poss, is it possible to write an ordinance that would specifically prohibit, by the way the ordinance is structured, a council member receiving a raise in perpetuity?
Yeah, I didn't read, I didn't conduct that level of research.
No. A council member could choose not to take the salary, could decline the salary increases if he or she wished. But, it is not, it's the prerogative, unless you form this commission, it's the prerogative of the council to set council salaries. And, a, a one council cannot say, well, council member so-and-so can never get a, an increase. So, the answer is no. But the council member can elect not to take that increase if he wished.
And that's.
And I may have heard your question a little bit different than the responses I'm hearing. A council member cannot vote himself a raise during the current, during the term he is serving. But if he is elected to a, another term and the salary has been adjusted during his previous term, he would get the raise, or she would get the raise.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you, Mayor. Tina, in the agenda bill where it has costs, expenditure required, my question regards setting up a commission. And, I'd like to see somebody else telling me what they think I should earn rather than me. So I'd sure like a commission. But is it true that it really will cost nothing to set up another, to set up a commission?
Well, we haven't done the research to, we haven't gotten permission to draft the ordinance yet on the salary commission. So, a new agenda bill could address that, those issues. But you're really looking at staff time. Who would be the designated staff liaison? How often would they meet? And, would it be something like, you know, every three years they meet? Or, there's one city that meets three times a year? So, it depends on the, the value. We just haven't done that yet.
So that would be decided later? After we get the information back from you?
Right.
Councilmember Winterstein.
So we don't have a motion yet, so exactly what we're considering, should we, should there be a motion?
Councilmember Barber.
Move to direct administration to prepare a draft ordinance for a Council Services and Safety Committee review and recommendation returned to the full council prior to year end.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Continuation of discussion or questions? Councilmember Winterstein.
I'm going to follow on Councilmember Milligan's question then. If, if you were given guidance tonight to prepare an agenda bill, then we would see an estimated cost if that included conveying a commission.
You would see some staff hours that would be associated with different frequency. That's the only cost I can think of with regards to a, a commission would be staff time.
Councilmember Barber.
And so, the commission could literally, if we, if it moves forward and there was a salary commission brought forward, that would be, as our regular boards and commissions, they are, they're a volunteer group of people that meet. I'm assuming that would be the same.
Yeah, the ordinance.
There would not be a paid position for the.
Correct. It would be independent. There's the RCW that's specified up here. So there's some core information that would have to be included in the ordinance. And then, we'd want to look further at how the other cities are doing theirs to see what is the best fit for Izakua if council chooses to move forward with a independent salary.
And this could be convened for a one time. This, this could be not a continuation of a, another commission that is, is sitting as intact. So it would be a one time.
True. Yeah, Mercer Island is an example of that, where they, they have the ability to call a salary commission, an independent salary commission together, anytime that they wish to look at their salaries. So they meet, their term is only good for that duration. And once it's concluded, that salary commission sunsets. And then, at a future date, if council wished to look at their salaries again, the clerk would need to be directed to sort of fill those vacancies.
Councilmember Marz.
I see that number four says salary increases established by the commission. Is it possible for the commission to decrease salaries?
Yes. Yes. So a little bit further down there, five, talks about the decreases, and then it also talks about, I don't know if it's in here, but as City Attorney Tanaka referenced, regardless of what way council went about establishing salaries through an independent salary commission or by its own action, council members could, they have the avenue to decline salary if they chose.
Yeah, and unlike the increase, which can be effective immediately, the decrease is only effective for the next term, any decrease. So, and you can't decline the decrease, so.
Well, that hardly seems fair. Thank you.
Councilmember Share, followed by Councilmember Barber.
Thank you. You know, I really support this idea because it's been 12 years since this council has looked at a salary adjustment, and, you know, I don't need another $50, I don't need 50 fewer dollars. That's not the reason I became a council member, and I don't think there's any of us up here who are doing it for the money, that's for sure. But, you know, it's really a fairness issue. It's time to look at it, in my opinion, and I agree with Nina's comment that I'd rather have somebody else telling me than trying to sit here and figure out, you know, what it should be and look at these 15 cities that are examined in the bill report, and, you know, 13 of the 15 of them have higher salaries than we do. Now, it's not by much. You know, some of them are 50 bucks, some of them are a little bit more. You know, we're not talking about being Bell California here. We're not giving ourselves a million dollars, and I, you know, I'm fine if we want to look at making that decision and having future councils abide by it, but at the same time, like Nina said, I'd rather have somebody, an independent commission, who can look at this, analyze the data, look at what other cities are doing, you know, and we're not the only city who's considered or would do a salary commission. There's six other cities here, ranging from Kirkland to Redmond to Mercer Island, Bothell, Puyallup, Federal Way, who all do this. And so it's not like we're going out on a limb here by saying, you know, let's give ourselves a raise. That's not what this is about. It's about taking a look at what's fair, what we spend for the amount of time that we put in as council members, for the amount of time that other folks who will run for these positions that we now hold spend as council members. And I wouldn't expect a future council to go back every year, or even every two years, or even every four years, and make these sort of adjustments. But, you know, if you were to tell somebody that they were going to be stuck at the same salary for 12 years, no COLA, not a single benefit whatsoever, I mean, they wouldn't really want that job. And again, we're not doing it for the money, but, you know, there's a lot of things we forego as council members. We spend a lot of our personal time, you know, many of us have jobs outside of this. You know, we forego, at least I personally do, and I'm sure many of you do, the mileage reimbursement or a meal reimbursement for going out because of our regional activities and, you know, the places we have to drive and the things we have to do to perform our duties. So if we're looking at, you know, $50 a month, or, I mean, I don't know what the commission will come back with. They could say, keep it the same for a city our size. They could say, decrease it for a city our size. I mean, that's why we have to live with whatever they come back with. But to me, that just seems fair. It seems reasonable. It seems like now's the right time. You know, when other cities are looking at increasing their minimum wage, we're looking at increasing our, you know, very minimum wage that we already receive. And, you know, if you don't want an increase, or you don't want a salary whatsoever, and you want to just do this job as a volunteer, then I guess you don't have to accept the money. You can donate it. You know, you can give it away. You don't have to take the money to be a city council member. But I just think that this is the right time to take a look at this after, you know, well, I guess it's been eight years. They were last updated 12 years ago, but even eight years is a pretty long time.
Councilmember Barber.
Basically, a lot of what Councilmember Share said. I don't think there's anybody here that is doing this for the dollars that we receive and miles reimbursement. I'm not getting miles reimbursement. We need to talk to Tina about that. I think the one thing that, you know, and we don't know what the salary commission is going to come back if we move forward with it. They came back with a decrease for us. But I think, I've had a number of people a couple of times going, how do you do those, you know, meetings every, you know, and I average them out, it's like 12 meetings a month. Hopefully, it would probably bring in additional people who might want to move forward and put their hand up for this position. We've had so many elections that we've had no challengers, and I think that is sort of, well, there's been, there's been a number of seats that have gone unchallenged. There's been only that one person who's signed up, and no one is coming forward to also put their name in the hat to run for these seats. And I think, hopefully, if there is a small increase, that might change, that we might have others that are moving forward, putting their hands and hats in the ring and saying that they want to try to move, take one of our seats. So I'll be supporting it this evening. I think it's timely, as Josh said.
Thank you. So I was not in favor of this out of committee because, you know, the amount we receive now and any likely adjustment, either up and down, and my feeling was that it was, it's token compensation either way, and I just didn't want to have the issue, I didn't want to spend any time on the issue. I did, I thought that is also an expression of, I think my priorities are to spend my time on other considerations. So those are my reasons for voting against it, and I'm going to maintain that position this evening.
Any one else before we vote on the motion? Councilmember Marz.
Well, I'm not sure what to do because I thought, coming into this process, that the raising it by ordinance was such that people never got to get a raise personally. And so I thought that was the better way to do things. I agree with Councilmember Barber that I think that having a comparable structure to other like-sized municipalities or perhaps like-sized responsibilities is a good idea, and I think that it is, you know, those of us who didn't have opponents in the last election, it's sure nice to get your summer, but I also agree that things that encourage the public engagement are good, and certainly an extra 50 or 100 bucks or 200 bucks is not going to make or break somebody, but it's not, it's not a bad thing. So I think that I support this because I think that compared to the other options in front of us, it's probably the most fair way, and at some point, sooner or later, someday, our salaries will really be out of whack with everybody else. Now, they just seem low compared to comparable cities, and it certainly, as the by ordinance option is described, doesn't, seems less fair because council members often serve multiple terms and could get that additional salary. So I think I'll be supporting this bill this evening.
So just sort of listening to the discussion, it sounds like, and I don't want to predetermine, but if the motion is approved, we're looking for some guidance, and there are some questions that would be helpful if we are going to end up preparing an ordinance. And so the, from the discussion, I heard some thoughts around a salary commission that was appointed to serve for a certain period of time, or a salary commission that would be a one-time salary commission to look at current compensation for council members.
It seems the Mercer Island option is the one where you call it, it's sort of a third option, right? Where it's not a one-time...
Oh, it's when needed.
Yeah.
Sort of like our civil service commission.
I like that. I like that you don't keep the, you don't keep that organization running all the time. You don't keep the staff load all the time, but you create the opportunity when needed.
Any thoughts about number of members?
I didn't have a thought about a number of members. I just wanted to mention one item that if this moves forward, it would be an interesting question as the administration does its investigation. There's one thing that we get, which is a stipend regarding the Internet Service for Use, you know, for council business, and so I guess that would have to be something that's part of the consideration, because we're not talking about, I guess, just strictly the monthly deposit salary. There's that one piece of it. I mean, other cities shown on the list here get, you know, medical and all sorts of other stuff, so, I mean, I guess that's the one thing that we get, which in my mind has a very good reasoning and rationale, but as the administration prepares or talks to salary commission, that would be the one area that I would want to make sure doesn't fall through any cracks because I do support us getting that stipend.
Yeah, I'm not, I'll have to do a little more research. This is talking about salary, not about benefits, and to me, those are two different things, even though it is money, I understand.
And see, I don't know, and that's, I just wanted to raise it so it can be part of the questioning and conversation.
Yeah, so if this moves forward, we'll have to look to see what the extent of the commission's authority would be by law.
Thank you.
Tina?
Thank you. The sort of clarifying of number of members, length of term, effective date, all of that, I was really looking to explore that further in committee or in work session, so that gives me some time to do a little bit more research and come back with some, a better draft of an ordinance.
Okay, I think that's a great suggestion. This is a policy question that could be considered, some of the things she's talking about at a council work session?
Committee.
A council...
Yeah, I think services and safety is the right forum. Would you...
It's recommended, yeah.
Yeah, I think...
Okay. Perfect. Okay, so I think we have enough information now to prepare a draft ordinance to refer to the Services and Safety Commission. So all those in favor of directing the administration to prepare a draft ordinance for the Council Services and Safety Committee review and recommendation returning to the full council prior to year end, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Those opposed to, so that carries by a vote of five to two, with Councilmember Winterstein and Goodman voting in the negative. That concludes our last regular business item. Moving now to the Good of the Order, does anyone have anything for Good of the Order this evening? Seeing no one, then we are adjourned at 9:03.